Mark.
Little gavel here, get hit the gavel once. Okay, welcome everyone to our council meeting, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I'll call Kate, sorry.
Here. Here.
Here. Here.
I'm having audio, can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Yep. So. Here. Oh, she can't hear.
She's online.
Councilor Beach.
Oh.
Is anyone else having problems hearing?
They, if they do, they can't answer.
This is Jim, I'm up here, I can hear you.
There we go.
We're good here.
Okay, thank you, I can hear you now, thank you, can hear you now.
Hey Donna?
Yes.
Sorry about that, I'll call you after, sorry about that.
Oh, no, that's, I kind of figured you got tied up, no.
Yes, sorry, sorry about that.
No problem.
You didn't miss any, didn't miss anything, believe me.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, here we are. And we got our roll call done, right? We're good? Good, that brings us to our presentation tonight, which we're so happy to be doing. So, let me read it from here and then we'll go up to the podium and present it, so. We have a proclamation, a town council proclamation. The town of Berlin hereby recognizes Paul Eshu. Paul, I'm gonna read this, Paul, we got a lot of good stuff here, so I don't want to miss, miss out on anything here, alright? Paul was a loyal, dedicated town resident, serving the community in numerous ways for well over thirty-five years. He and his wife Pat were very proud of the life they built in Berlin, raising their three daughters, Paula, Marlene, and Melissa. Paul has a son, Tim, four grandchildren, two son-in-laws, one daughter-in-law. Busy, he been busy. Busy life, it's a good life. Paul was an industrial art teacher for thirty-six years in New Britain and an interim vice principal at Pulaski High. And he was an inspiration for all three of his daughters becoming teachers, so that's pretty impressive. Paul served the Navy from nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen sixty-two, was a petty officer, E-four yeoman, and was on the USS Randolph. This is a source of pride for Paul, and two of his grandsons are now in the US Navy, again. Pretty cool. He belonged to the Lions Club for many years, he was a member of the Berlin, Berlin VFW and the American Legion, and the Berlin Republican Town Committee. He served on the Selective Service Board, he also volunteered a great deal of his time working with the New Britain Chamber of Commerce to run programs for at-risk students, and was an adult ed teacher in New Britain. He also volunteered, Paul, and mentored for many years with his wife Pat in the schools where their daughters taught. For the town of Berlin, Paul was a member of the Charter Commission in nineteen eighty-eight. He served on the Board of Tax Review from nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-five. He was a constable for twenty-eight years, from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand twenty-one, and a justice of the peace from two thousand one to two thousand twenty-five. He also served on the Veterans Advisory Commission and Police Commission for many years, beginning in two thousand three and two thousand nine respectively, with both terms ending in January of two thousand twenty-five. In recognition of your dedication to your country, your family, and the years of service to the town of Berlin, as well as the many contributions you made to improve the quality of life in our community, the town council hereby recognizes Paul Eshu and extends best wishes for many years of health and happiness to come. Not there, Paul. Well, I got the mic, alright. People online, be careful, this might hurt. I don't know where you held the time, Paul, but you found it. One pack of the job. You did. Got a great family. Yes, you did. So. We even framed it for you, it was special. We ran out of money in the budget, so we printed in gold for it. So, just congratulations on everything and you know, your, your credit to, to your country, the town, your family, and you're just a great guy. So, congratulations again.
I didn't know what I was gonna say about today. But, it all started back, I was in the Berlin Lions Club. And one day, Bob Peters, no, it was before I got in there, Bob Peters came over my house, his wife and my wife are friends. He asked if I wanted to get into the Berlin Lions, and I said certainly. So, I, that's where it all started. And then Bob and I became very good friends. And so one day, we're on the back porch of his house, and he said, I have something to tell everybody. They came out with a cup and he says, I'm collecting money because I'm gonna run for mayor. So, I gave him a quarter, I started laughing. And, but he was, he was a great guy, and then he asked me if I would do this, and I could never say no to him because I liked him a lot, so. It was my beginning with the town, and I was very proud to serve a lot of good people, and thank you very much for his citation, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take that for me? Oh, thank you.
Handsome looking face and, and citation in the picture. And thank you folks for, for all comments. Great. And we'll see next week. Yeah. Oh, it's all good, it's all good. Yeah. Alright. Okay, okay, alright, where we at here now? The mayor's update, and we got enough to update in the meeting today, so. I'm sorry, I just said, I don't want to miss that, that, that we don't want to miss, so we have our audience of citizens, if anyone wants to speak to us now, whether here or, or online now, would be your time. Don't all rush the mic at once.
I, I'd like to say something.
No, no, you can't, your council is for the citizens and the audience. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Last time I checked, I was a citizen. I would, I would, Pete Rosso, thirty-four, Berlin.
Oh, yeah.
I will, I will just note that Berlin resident and Berlin native, Ryan Priest came in third at the NASCAR race.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
It's a matter of time.
Yeah.
A matter of time.
Gotta get them in.
Thank you.
Alright, excellent, alright, anyone else from the audience here? Online, anybody, any hands raised? Not, no one, okay, alright, well. Alright, we'll close our audience of citizens, mayor's update, nothing, we'll, we'll go on to our consent agenda. So we have, what do we have here? And by topics, donations to animal control, library donations, senior center director applied for a DOT grant for assistance with the senior center. And we have and the authorized town manager entered a farm use license with, with Ryan Mattson for probably a portion of the property, so we're trying to straighten that out. We've all, the council members, I've read this packet before, that's our consent agenda, so we'll go ahead and take a motion on that.
Want to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Appreciate it, second?
Second.
Thank you, any other comments or questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, on to one A.
I, so, what moved to add, the agenda item, one A, for an update and possible action on the YMCA.
Thank you, Charlie, second on that?
Second.
Thank you. And this will be discussion, but we may make a motion on this too, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So moved. Okay. Where we at?
Good evening, everyone.
You're on, Ryan, yes, you're on.
So, our first agenda item this evening is in regards to the, the recent bill that was passed and signed into law, as Representative Beach, I'm sure, is aware, and this is in regards to the depreciation of motor vehicle, this has been in the news quite a bit. You may have seen that this year, the state had passed a new law where the depreciation, instead of using the, the market value of a motor vehicle, would, would now use a set on the MSRP value, a set depreciation schedule. And so that depreciation schedule had severely impacted a lot of towns' grand lists, including, including Berlin, with, with a hit to our motor vehicle. And so, because of the concerns from, from municipalities, the legislature recently passed a, a bill on March third, I believe, or second, that would kind of scale back that depreciation schedule, so instead of starting at eighty-five percent, it would start at a ninety percent. But it's up to the town councils and, and the boards of selectmen throughout the state to, to adopt that, and so our, our assessor is here, Joe Ferraro, to, to discuss this, there's quite a bit of information in your packets about this. And just to, if you were to adopt it, just so you know, currently, and we'll talk about the budget later this evening, but right now, the Board of Finance has proposed a, a point, which would be a point seven increase to the mill, mill rate for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. If the council were to adopt this new modified depreciation schedule, it would reduce that mill rate increase by point one-two, which would bring us to a point five-eight mill rate increase currently. And so, Joe, I'll, I'll turn it over to you, I think that's kind of the, the highlights though.
Yeah, the, once again, it's up to the council to approve this, the legislators did change this depreciation schedule. It does shift some burden back to the vehicles. They still will get a reduction, but not as much as they would have received. We did notice during the calculation that if you did adopt this, the savings to the reduction in the property tax would be about thirty dollars per household. I don't know if on the end result, the vehicles themselves, if the, if it's gonna be a wash, or will they pay a little bit more if, if a household has two vehicles at, say, ten thousand dollars in assessment. What it also does though, is we, the BAA has completed their duties, but if you do adopt this, it does extend the, the appeal process for real estate. So it does open up another avenue for individuals that did not appeal by February twentieth, to be able to come in and appeal their assessment. And if they do that, then they also opens the town to litigation. The town, the council has to weigh, weigh this out, is it, is it feasible? Is it worth it? The appeal process is truly an unknown. I have no, we have no idea if somebody will make an appeal, and what the substance of that appeal will be. Other than that, we, we work numbers and you have what the mill rate would be. So it's truly up to the council if they wish to adopt this.
Thank you, Joe. I think, and that appeal process though ends real second, fairly quickly, so. I, I, from what I understand, out, out there in the state, many, many towns have adopted to do this, and this was a fix really, that, right, that the legislature, I think, came up with to you know, kind of fix that initial vehicle property tax, that was gonna be a bigger burden on our real, real property owners.
And I, I just want to
Yes, please.
I think it's important to know, because I've seen some confusion on this issue in other towns, and I've seen some comments from residents that say, oh, you know, my town council is, is raising my motor vehicle tax, and and so it's important to understand that when it comes to the grand list, and it comes to what are, we're taxed on, we, the budget is set at a certain dollar amount. So e, if it doesn't come from motor vehicles, it's going to come from real estate or personal property, and so while the legis, legislature tried to adjust, and I, and I think it does make sense personally, you know, moving to this depreciation schedule, whether it be at the ninety percent or the eighty-five, it really sets the bar for everyone by, it makes it a more even playing field, because what you won't have going forward is you won't have what happened during COVID, where there was a real spike in motor vehicles, remember, the motor vehicles, used cars shot up in price? And then all of a sudden, you get your, your tax bill from the town, and you're saying, why am I paying more for my car this year than I did last year? And, and so this, you know, because of this new schedule, you will, will avoid that, but this is not the town raising taxes on motor vehicles, as Joe said, you, everyone who has a motor vehicle in the town of Berlin would still see a slight reduction in their car tax from last year, fiscal twenty-five, so I just want to make sure people are aware of that.
Just one question.
Yeah.
Joe, as I'm sure you're well aware of, anything registered as an early American has a, a value of five hundred, this doesn't affect that, right?
Not at all, in fact, the legislators, with their, the depreciation, when it gets to a certain level, you can place not less than five hundred dollars on these old vehicles. Classic plates are completely different, they come in automatically with a classic plate, so that doesn't change. But we looked at a lot of these old vehicles that were daily drivers, and we just used five hundred dollars on them because, you know, you're over twenty years old, and they're using it for daily driver. It's not gonna make a significant amount of, dollar amount to the overall motor vehicle list.
Thanks, Joe.
Any other questions, council members?
Just a quick question, I know we can't predict how many appeals we might get, but on average, in prior years, how many have we gotten? I don't know if you have those numbers, Joe? And to compare it to.
Well, but, 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 we, we, the statutory deadline is February twentieth. So it's not like we didn't, we haven't had an appeal period this year. All this does is reopen it for two weeks.
No, I know, it's just Joe was saying before, it could open us up to more appeals, and he said there's no way to predict that, which I understand, I'm just trying to say, if we do get appeals in that time period, what do we have maybe to compare that against?
I don't know that there's anything to compare it against, because the way you'd have to look at it is, there's only two reasons why somebody would file an appeal. One, they missed the February twentieth deadline, and there's just not a lot of people that do that. Because if there were, then every five years, and we do a revow, we'd see people in years two and three following a revow, filing appeals, and we really don't see that. And the second would be if they had a tax impact as a result of adopting the alternative depreciation schedule for motor vehicles that shifted more tax onto their residential tax bill, and that caused them to bring an appeal, and quite frankly, we don't get
Okay.
But a couple residential tax appeals every five years.
Okay.
There's just not a lot of tax appeals.
Okay, thank you.
The, the, Echo and Jeff, the, the market out there is phenomenal. So our base shares twenty-twenty-two, and the properties that are selling are way above our numbers. That's another reason why we won't, we had like, I think, twelve appeals this past year. So, the market conditions also dictate how many appeals that we also will, will get in a given year.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Donna, anything? Donna?
No, I'm good, I, I'm, I'm listening to this, thank you, I'm good.
Okay, thanks.
Unless somebody wants to pay my car taxes.
Okay, so we're, so I, take a motion here?
Move to an Act HB seven zero six seven, this section allows a municipality to increase depreciation table for motor vehicles from current schedule, beginning at eighty-five percent and ending at fifteen percent for years fifteen through nineteen, and then an assessment not less than five hundred dollars to a higher depreciation schedule, beginning at ninety percent, and ending at twenty percent for years fifteen through nineteen, and then the assessment not less than five hundred dollars.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? In this hearing, none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved. Alright, thank you, Joe, thank you.
You're welcome, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
One for each of you guys. Okay.
Okay. We'll move on to agenda item one A, and this is in regards to the YMCA and a potential action, we do have our Public Works Director, Mike Ahern, is here, as well as Don Rittman from the YMCA, as well, as well as, and, and Jack, I hope I, Jack, I hope I get your name right, Jack Nubizer, with J L N Contracting, so we have some, some guests, I, I don't know, Mike, do you want to come up first and talk?
Hello. Hello. I was involved in a conference call last week with members of the Y, Don Lombardo, Lombardo from the Public Building Commission, Ryan, and the mayor, and we were talking about maybe some aspects of the site that could be investigated. So, Jack sent a proposal to all of us, and, and one part of it had a geotechnical investigation. Don Lombardo was on the conference call, got the proposal, and I think as a first step, the PBC could do a geotechnical investigation of the Patterson Way site across from the high school, because no matter what happens to the site, knowing what's in the ground, and what is, you know, as far as structural fill, whatever, foundation design would be contingent on that information, so really, the ask tonight, well, first of all, is to notify you of this, and the second is to give the PBC authorization to go ahead with the geotechnical investigation of the site, so it's boring, just have a geotechnical engineer, take a look at the actual, the soil, the structural capabilities of it, you do slab on grade, you have to do piers, that kind of thing. So, that's really the gist of it. There may be more that the Y wants the town to do, but that, I think, is the first step, the geotech investigation would reduce any, you know, sort of cost to the Y, and also improve our understanding of the site. So that's sort of the, just of it, I guess you'd say.
Yeah.
And this is sort of la, last minute.
Mike, will this identify any problems, pollution problems?
No, well, if the boring started having an aroma, yes.
Okay.
But that's not the intent of it.
No, I understand.
Investigations before, which we're actually, we were talking about last week, that there were some, I think there was some soil testing done. Jim Mahoney knows more about that than I do. So we're gonna look at that as well, but as far as this, this motion tonight would just be for geotechnical investigations.
Okay.
And the Y wants to add something else about that, that's fine, but that's sort of, to me, that would be the first.
I just, can we fund this with that original state grant money?
Be covered under the loan, I mean, the grant that we have, and it is within the scope of that objective for that loan.
Yeah, that, and that was, so that was one of the reasons for this, and we realized in, in talking to the Y, as we had decided to let them do their due diligence, even if the Y, let's say, doesn't build a building there, if the town decides to build it, we need to do this no matter what, it wasn't done with the original, any of the original money, that went to the architect for some pretty drawings, and we didn't really get this technical with that, because we didn't get that far, so we need this no matter what happens on that property.
I think the building pad is gonna be almost in the same
The same spot, yeah.
It's not gonna be all the way in the back of the wetland, it's gonna be in the front, sort of, so.
Yeah.
But the Y can give us some information on where they think the pad would be. We could probably look at what the architect had done, and make sure the geotechnical investigation covers whatever anyone could put on that site, you know.
Yeah. And that's good, because we, remember, we, we had a commission, I, I forget who was on it, but that, we had, I think, four sites we were looking at for, for the Y, right, it was, one was on Sage, by Sage Park, this one, I forget the third and fourth, one was down.
Crystal Creek.
Crystal Creek was the other one, and then one by the train station somewhere, right? Berlin Steel, right? Well, that's right, that was another one, so we settled on this site as the best location, everyone thought, but, you know, who knows what's in the ground, so.
And we have the money.
Yes, and we have the funding from the state as part of that grant that we used already, part of it, we still have some left over to conduct this, so anyway, yeah, I just, that was just.
You know, what's, what wasn't done and
Yes. Sure.
Overall.
Yes, yeah.
Key to Ross Orford for the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi, Jack Nubizer.
Hey, Jack, don't worry.
Jail and contracting. Yeah, so Don had come to me, plugged a little bit about the project, how it's been a little bit bogged down, asked me if I could take a look, give my opinion on what would need to be done in order to get to budgeting phase, growing and budgeting. So, the initial proposal that you've read, I broke it down into two phases, first phase being induced part of that. But that's not the entire part of it. I think somebody, I think, I believe, Mr. Rosso, you'd asked the question about whether or not this was an environmental study. Not, the geotech study is, is different than, than environmental. I don't know, it has a phase one been done on it typically, if you're going for a bank loan or something like that, first thing would be, they'd look for a phase one to make sure the site is not so that's really not what the geotech covers, but obviously, as those boring from being done, if there's, or we had any reason to suspect something, it would come up, but that's not part of this initial proposal.
Okay.
I guess. I'm a resident here, I'm, I've been on the board and do business development for the Meriden, New Britain, Berlin YMCA, and we've been trying to get this built for about four years, maybe five years. When we merged, we, you know, we were kind of committed to building a Y in the town of Berlin, had a swimming pool. As you all know, the swimming pool that is used currently is the Y pool in Meriden, it's not a competition pool. So, you know, the town has been looking for some kind of a pool forever. And the, the study that was done didn't address any of the things that you have in your report. I mean, it basically, you spent money for pretty pictures and nothing much more than that. They didn't look at the site, they didn't look at parking, they didn't look at regulations, anything. So, you know, if you look into the proposal, that's what we're saying needs to be done, we can do this in conjunction with the town, and the town has the funds already to, to try to figure out if a building can be built there, what size building, and what it can be used for. Jack pointed out in this too, that there's some regulations as to how those two properties can be combined, and whether or not they can be combined, so that's something that the, the town council is gonna have to look at, make sure that it can be built, because there's some statute or regulation that says that to combine these two properties or nonprofit, or even in the cities, there's certain regulations that have to or nonprofit, or even in the cities, uh, there's certain regulations that have to be addressed. So, um, you know, we're here to work with the town. Um, we want to get a Y bill. And it's a long time coming. And if you folks can see your well, way to start the process, to use some of this money, investigate the site and do, you know, the things that we were looking for in this, it's a good, good first step to get things done. So I'm asking that you go ahead and, and prove whatever portion of the funds can be used for the town and for us. And hopefully, we can get a pool and a place, um, where the kids can walk across the street and use a pool right after school. Uh, the other thing that you should know, and I know it's been addressed several times, silver sneakers and, you know, some other things that we've talked about. Almost a hundred percent of the seniors could use the pool in this facility for free. And, you know, you got twenty-two thousand people in this town. Roughly sixty percent of the people are over the age of sixty. So it makes sense to have this thing done. So, you know, again, I'm asking you, whatever you can do, let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Jack. Yes, yes, yeah, what do you got?
I hate to say this, but I take exception.
To what?
That we spent money for pretty pictures on that study. I mean, you know, if you want to be on the same team, that's fine.
Yeah.
But let's not sling arrows.
All right. Well, yes, yes, sir.
Um. This is more, uh, question for our town engineer. Should we, if we decide to move forward with the geotech study, should we authorize the public building commission to also do a phase one? Because that would seem to be a necessary.
We could, I just.
Part of the puzzle.
Yeah, I, I heard from Jim Mahoney that they were, there were, there was a firm that did some initial investigations of the site. I don't know if it qualified as a phase one, but I don't, I think you'd need a recent phase one anyway before any sort of land transfer or, or deal.
If we're going to do the geotech study, it would seem to me go hand in hand instead of going part A and come back in three months and do part B. Let's.
Phase one isn't a bad idea personally.
But then we know what we got, you know.
What did, what did PBC agree to on the call or what did, what did they say?
I don't think we got that far yet.
Yeah.
We haven't got that far.
Focused on the geotech.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We wanted to start with that, but we can certainly, when they, when we, you know, transfer this to them and they, hopefully, we'll start this and we can get this done. And we can talk about the phase one with them too.
Phase one's not a big ticket item.
Yeah, yeah.
Normal real estate transactional like.
They could go out and look for oil tanks now instead of later.
And that was one question I had, was one done? You're doing geotech, you haven't done a phase one, it's almost like you're in the cart before the horse in life.
Yeah. Yeah, well, let.
Could add that to the motion, I don't think the PBC would disagree at all.
All right, yeah, thank you.
I, I think we should.
Now, if we move forward on this, they do their study. What's the timeline on a study and what's the timeline in getting the results back to us?
What are we thinking?
Oh, phase one can be done probably in, under a month.
Oh, okay.
That's a desktop review and they don't do any physical testing. That will be a phase two.
Yep.
Phase three is cleanup.
Yep.
Geotech would depend on the geotechnical engineers' schedule really.
Okay.
But usually you can get those done in under two months.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not going to be eight months, ten months, a year.
So I mean, once, yeah, but once they do their, geotech does their thing, they, they do that, how, how much time is after that? Is it going to take to get the results back to us?
Uh, it's pretty quick.
Pretty quick, okay.
They do ten borings, that's like two days of work in the field. Now, to get them on the schedule is one thing. But two days in the field, maybe three, and then the geotechnical engineer will do their, you know, Civ analysis and look at the structural, you know, sort of stability and then their recommendations. So it's not, it's not a six month.
Jack, you should put us at the top.
I always get a house.
Put it, put us on the top of the list. My son played hockey with his son, I know.
Oh, do you? Okay, all right, okay, there you go.
We go back a few years.
So you're going to beat him up a little bit now or what? What are you going to do?
Last, last time I saw him, his hair wasn't white, so.
He's got a little hair.
Oh, there we go, okay, all right. Oh, yeah, little, little rivalry there, that's okay, that's, that's healthy, that's all good.
I, I did, I did have, uh, a question. Understand.
Was.
Right, but that's just one portion of the whole. In order to get through the planning and zoning.
Yeah, we do, I don't think they put it in the pack. But public buildings is going to kind of handle, I think we should do.
Talked to Maureen today about some of that, she's going to check out the twenty-five acre. So, yeah, they, uh, they raised two, two criteria that were in the zoning regulations that Maureen, the planning director, is going to check out. One was a twenty-five acre nonprofit threshold, and the other was parking. So I think she's going to check those out and then give you guys an answer on, is this allowable? Will there have to be a zoning amendment or whatever?
Right.
And then, I know there's a lot more on your proposal.
Yeah, and then, you know, we were talking about, obviously, typically getting a basic survey and the T two survey done. So we know where the boundaries are, the properties need to where and by. So there's several steps. The geotech, to your point, is useful. Yep. Um, but it's just one small part of getting.
I think we can discuss that with the PBC at their next meeting. Jack, can I tell them about how long that, we think all that would take?
Uh, I don't disagree. I, I mean, it's really about getting them scheduled. It's, it's probably, once you get them on the schedule, it's probably a two to three week process to get the geotech report back. But again, that's only one part of the larger picture of the design.
There, good, Mark? Mark?
I'm good.
Yeah, yeah, we're good, yeah, no, that, I mean, that's the reason why we're sending it to PBC. It's where it should lie, you know, they, they know what they're doing with the building. Um, and that's why we send all these projects to them, to, uh, get this, get this rolling along. So, thank you, thank you, Mike, so.
Take a motion?
Take a motion, yes.
I move to authorize the public building commission to move forward with the geotechnical study of the area and, uh, environmental phase one study or whatever studies they deem necessary to understand the location for the possible YMCA.
Thank you. A second on that?
Second.
Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's get this rolling, right? Let's get this going.
Let's make a splash.
All right, all right. Well, yes, sir, Mr. Ryan. Good, they shook and made up, that's good, see, that's good, that's all right.
All right. Next up is agenda item two, and this is in regards to the Flock camera. And this is the contract. You, you may recall, uh, we've had presentations in the past. I know Deputy Chief Gallup is on as well as Lieutenant Solak. Uh, this is part of the non-budgeted appropriation that's coming up. Uh, and just, uh, I guess I'll, I'll turn it over to the deputy chief to talk about the, we, we have a potential price decrease if we act soon.
So, uh, we have done presentations for both the town council and the finance board at this point for the Flock technology. We have an opportunity, if we sign the contract with Flock in the next thirty days and that window is, is closing. Um, if we, if, if you authorize the chief to sign that contract, we would get fifteen thousand dollars off the total cost for the first year of the Flock technology. There's also an opt-out clause. So if the funding did fall through and not become available for the Flock technology, then the contract would just be null and void. Um, and nothing else would happen with it. So there's really no downside to the town, so really authorize that to be signed. And, uh, if we do get the funding, then we'll get that fifteen thousand dollars off. And it goes from fifty-one thousand to thirty-six thousand for the first year. And like I said, if the funding falls through, then, um, we won't owe anything. And that, that would be the end of it. Um, so we're simply asking for you to authorize the chief to go ahead and sign that contract.
Okay. Um, any questions for the chief? Oh, and I know we already had the presentation, chief. Hey, chief, just one quick question.
Um. Yes, sir.
So as we go down the road with this, uh, technology, so.
Mm-hmm.
You know, not that we would, I'm just, you know, you never know with new technology, good or bad. Uh, we decide it's not the, the right thing for Berlin. What, what, what do we sign it, what do we say, three? Were we signing a three-year contract? I forget what we were talking about.
No, this, this would be.
I think I put a termination for convenience provision in there, didn't I?
Yeah, I don't think we're tied into multiple years. I think it's just we go year by year.
Year by year, okay, great. Well, you know, just, who knows what pops up with it, right? So.
Sure.
If we're unhappy for some reason.
The nice thing is, we're basically leasing the technology, we're not actually buying it.
Yeah, okay.
And basically, what that discount gives you the first year is they do all the installation, the licensing and getting authorization to put those cameras up. That's essentially all free. So that's kind of the benefit of, of, uh, go ahead and signing with them now.
Got you. Thanks, chief. Any other questions? We're good?
I know it was discussed during the presentation, but who's the actual owner of the data?
The owner of the data?
The data is contained within the Flock system. It can only be accessed by authorized law enforcement, um, who is part of the Flock network. And so what we can do is when you, you go, you have your Flock cameras, we can allow surrounding times, surrounding towns that also have Flock to access our data as well. And so we share data in that way. We become part of that network. That data is only stored for thirty days and then it's, uh, deleted out of the system. So if you're looking for something, you have to do it within the thirty days and then, then it's deleted out after that. Um, but that, the, the cameras themselves and the system is owned by Flock. We just lease it. And the data is contained within the Flock system. It's, it's, you don't really maintain ownership of it because it deletes itself out within thirty days.
Okay, thank you.
Question, yes? Other question?
I, I have.
Oh, Donna, yes, Donna, Donna, I see your hand up.
I'm trying to be professional, use a hand raising. Chief, just a quick question. If, um, you didn't men- mention maintenance. So if there's anything that goes wrong with the equipment or whatever, you know, is it something that's covered as well?
That's the nice part about leasing, is they're responsible for, for maintenance and any repairs.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else, we're good?
Yeah, good.
Okay, so, uh, take a motion.
Move to authorize the chief of police to sign the current Flock agreement, allowing the town to take advantage of your fifteen thousand dollar savings by signing the contract within thirty days. Flock is a sole service provider of these cameras. This agreement will be voided if funding is not approved in the fiscal year twenty-sixth budget.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Um.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, I'm very uncomfortable handing law enforcement to a private company. Uh, I know there's supposed to be insurances of where this data goes in only thirty days and, um, maybe I'm just too old school. Um, I can't support handing part of law enforcement to a private entity.
Um, any other comments or questions? If now we have a motion on the floor, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, no, okay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, thank you, chief.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, we'll move on to agenda item number three. So, uh, we've, we've spent a lot of time with the, the board of finance recently. They've done a terrific job, I think, going through, uh, the budget process. And so, uh, I'm going to talk more about this later, but we do have our annual budget hearing coming up next Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, at Berlin High School at six PM. So just put that on your calendars if it's not already. And then also afterwards, the board of finance is expected to adopt the budget after that. And so for the charter, the charter states that within five business days after which, or five days, we need to, the council needs to, uh, meet as well. So I'll turn it over to our town clerk to discuss.
We just need to set a special council meeting.
A date for the budget.
I believe, um, attorney De Nofio, you've said it's been five business days. So within that timeframe, um, I'm not sure why we did the meetings the second and fourth of the month, but, um, we need to have a meeting that first week of March, April.
There had to be a.
At the, and during that meeting, you'll discuss the budget and you can either, um, you know, approve the budget for referendum.
Yeah.
Or you can reduce it, or you can fight it out and have a joint meeting.
Cool. Let's fight it out with Raoul. Just kidding, just kidding, Raoul. Huh? So.
Do we have it the first?
Well, it has to be the first, that's what I think.
Yeah.
I think nothing like April first for a budget decision, yeah.
It's appropriate.
Yes, very appropriate. Is that, is that how we doing, folks? Can we make April first? So we'll discuss the budget, I mean, I, I wouldn't think it'll take that long. I mean, there certainly can be discussions, certainly could be some, you know, reductions or wanting to change or a joint meeting if we want to go back to it. But I don't think it would be, uh, a lengthy meeting. We good with that date, Sandy?
I wanted to. You wanted to do it for seven or what would you like?
Uh, what do you think?
Well, how about if we come in at six? How?
We get the board meeting at six, so. You want to do it seven, six thirty, seven, seven? Seven?
Which day?
Uh, the April first.
First works for me.
First, good. Pete? Donna, the first?
Um, I've got something early, hopefully, hopefully it won't last all day and I'll be able to get there. What time did you say, six or seven?
Seven, seven. Maybe it gives you a little bit more time?
Yep, yep, I'll write it down, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Donna, Charlie, we're good, we're all good?
Yeah.
Okay. April first it is.
We need a motion.
Move to special town council meeting on April first at seven PM to discuss and possibly adopt the budget to send the referendum.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved. Okay.
All right, yes. So we'll move on to agenda item number four. And this kind of segues into a continuation of, of the budget process. And so this year, uh, as with every year in the town, there's always a, a long list of capital needs that, uh, department heads and, and managers do, uh, a very good job combing through and figuring out what, what this town needs. And, and from what I understand, this, this happened before I started. what, what this town needs. And from what I understand, this, this happened before I started, it started back in October. I believe there were meetings and initially it was a twelve million dollar list that I think was then combed down to four million dollars of, of really tough needs. And then the Board of Finance asked, the department heads asked the town manager and our finance director to prioritize those needs. And so we prioritize from a, a number one to a number three, one being the top priorities, three being the ones that we might be able to go another year. And so this was a unique year for the town because as you all know, the town received the non-budget, excuse me, the, the Berlin High School state reimbursement, that two point six million dollars. So what the Board of Finance recommended was to use that two point six million dollar essentially windfall and, and get as much capital done as we could. And so they proposed and they, they put forward a, a plan for non-budget appropriation that would fund every item that was ranked a one or a two by the, by our managers and, and town manager and finance director. And so that's what's before you this evening for consideration. I know we have a number of managers and department heads here. If there's any questions, as well as our finance director, Kevin Delaney. Kevin, I'll, I'll turn it over to you first.
Uh, thanks, Ryan. I, I think you summarized it very well. I mean, I'll just emphasize that the Board of Finance evaluated what they thought might be the best use of this money. There were a couple of different ideas floated at potentially reducing the current year bonding and using some of the money for that. And as they looked at it, the Board of Finance elected to recommend unanimously that the money be directed towards the current year capital requests and as Ryan indicated, the highest priority items that were identified by the staff and ranked. And that's what's coming before you tonight is to call a town meeting to ask for a non-budget appropriation of this reimbursement. And try to move forward with a number of capital items that span everything from schools to the senior center, public safety, infrastructure, and even putting some towards potential future grant match, which could serve almost to, to multiply the benefit if we were able to put it as a local match against grants into the future.
Thank you, Kevin. So the, these are not really contained in the budget. This is like a separate, separate list, so. Yes, outside the budget. So I would just, there's three things on here I would just like to send to Public Building, honestly, before we, you know, commit to anything would be the Willard parking lot. I'd like them to take a look at it. The building at Timberland and the Sage Park lighting. And I'm not saying we're not going to do any of those. I, I just, I'd rather they look at those, certainly Willard and and the building. Because there may be some other alternatives to at least the building and maybe the parking too, but and the light. So the lights, the reason why I bring those up are, we do, Doug, and I know, you know, and, and Ryan, we're working on this with we want to do, because that, that price includes, right, the, the baseball field and the girls softball field, right, at Sage, which, which is great. And the good thing, the good news is that Eversource has agreed to install the lights at the boys, at the baseball field. So far, we, we, we might be able to twist their arm and they may be able to install the lights at the girls field too. We would have to buy.
They would consider that and do that.
Yes, I think they, they would.
I had spoke to Ron Stack on that also.
Yeah, I, I talked to Ron today. He, I, I don't think they committed. I, I think the guy he was dealing with committed, but then that guy, unfortunately, the he passed on unexpectedly, but, but, you know, we, we recontacted them and they definitely have committed to the boys, which would save us. I, I'm not sure how much that saves us yet. We'd have to look at that figure. And then I think, I, I think though, Mark, the girl, they may do the girls too.
I mean, while they're there, you know, they're.
Yes, and they're, and, and again, they're doing it as a training for the linemen, you know, so it's a great deal for the town. But we buy all the equipment, the brackets, the lights, or, you know, whatever they need to install. They're just doing the labor, basically.
So why would, would this be deferred then?
Not deferred. I just wanted to go to Public Building to work it out with, with Doug and we, we have to kind of work it out with Eversource. With their, I don't know what their timing is. I know we'd let, you know, obviously baseball season's coming, but just to work out the saving, I don't, I have no idea what the savings are in the three fifty, what the labor cost has broken out for the equipment. And I knew there's a couple of different equipment types we're looking at too, so I'd rather with yourself and Public Building, they figure out, you know, what equipment we're gonna buy. And, and then what, you know, what the ultimate cost. So I, the good thing is, I, I would assume it's gonna save us some nice, you know, funding from what I understand. It's the, right, the, I don't know what the breakdown Doug is or Ryan of the installation to the equipment. So what, do we have like a rough number? I, I wouldn't hold anybody to it. I'm just curious.
Yeah, we do have some, some rough numbers. I know, but we're not sure exact, right now, we, we received some, some quotes.
Yes.
That were very helpful.
Right.
However, Doug is working on getting pricing to compare apples to apples.
Okay.
Because there, there's a question on, I've learned a lot about lighting recently.
Yes.
On the wattage of the lights at the field and we want to make sure right now, there's fifteen hundred watt, well, right? Give or take, and then, but we're talking maybe twelve hundred LEDs.
Yeah.
But the proposal that we've seen was only five hundred LEDs, five hundred watts. And so the concern was that what we saw wasn't, might not meet the standards that we need. And so that's what Doug and, and I.
And who's that proposal from? That, that's just one of the proposals you got from a private company?
Yes.
Okay, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Is the number in this list inclusive of the higher price that we might spend? Basically, that'd be our maximum.
So the three hundred fifty thousand that's in here was Doug had gotten quotes on, on fully replacing the.
Labor and material.
Labor and materials and warranty everything and.
I, I think we should move forward with this tonight, as stated in the in the motion and at the town meeting, we can get more clarification or even down the road, if Doug get it done for less, we're not gonna say no. We know we're gonna save money where we can, so. We'll have.
I, I will point out that it does two of the three fields. You still have Scalise that
Yeah.
would need to be done.
That's not included in this price though. Scalise, right? No.
Well, what I'm hearing is they might have some money left over to put towards that, so.
It's.
I don't see where it could hurt by approving this motion.
So that's basically looking at phase two with Scalise, correct?
Correct, yeah. The initial estimate to fully do and, and as, as the mayor mentioned, we, we may be able to get it done a lot, a lot cheaper. But, but to, to account for contingency and to make, you know, to give you the highest estimate, that was initially six hundred fifty thousand.
Because I understand too, that, you know, that this other company is gonna come in and be sure all the lights are working. But still, you know, you have the baseball season coming up. There's a lot of games that are gonna be scheduled there. And the way the fields are now, you know, without sufficient lighting, it's a safety factor.
Doug is on that, right?
Okay.
Having the company come out.
Typically, what, what Steve and I do is we do the maintenance of existing, so whoever's in place now is, is functional, may not be optimal in today's standards, but we're trying to make sure that everything there is functional, that we can, for the, for the April season. Even if we start it tomorrow, I think there's, what we've seen in the past is up to one to two months to lead time on the fixtures.
Yeah, I was gonna say probably.
It may be tough, even if
Yeah.
everything fell into place to have it done for next month. The goal would be if, if funding is approved with this calendar year. Typically, what we do, we, we could still bring it to the commission for review. There's some electricians on the commission there.
It's.
And all this.
Right, that's what I.
Program, what we did was to kind of get the magnitude. We've done that in the past where the same company that gave us this proposal was the one that did the high school. So the fixtures, the upstream rebate through Eversource Supplies, the designs included, the engineering, labor, the warranty, et cetera. So there is a premium, of course, for the contractor to that turnkey versus what we're looking at is if we buy everything direct, contract off the labor, we can in-house. So there's a ways to break up the project, but the news is that the firms, there's, there's a few engineering firms that represent the state and all the distributors. Give us all the components, design criteria, all the lighting standards, so that make sure that we don't have any dark spots and we meet criteria. So some of the, the variations that we saw was what, what came in late. Other option, wattage was off from original design, so we're, we're just vetting that all out, so we can still bring it to the commission for, for next month.
Public Building?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they do have electricians on there. I mean, I would just be more comfortable, honestly, that they, they review it and we, I know we gotta do a bunch of breakouts with the, and, and you know, with Eversource, see what, what we're saving and then if we could hopefully convince Eversource to do the other field while they're there. Yeah.
If you're comfortable approving it, contingent by P B C, we'll just to move it forward to next step.
That's a good idea. That's, that's a good idea.
Yeah, not, not the first two though. The, the, the lights are fine, but the four hundred and the two hundred, I kind of want to let Public Building have their way with it and uh, and.
Roof, we're just gonna tar it, so we can cut that down a little bit.
Oh.
As you know, Doug, you, you know, with Eversource volunteering, you know, to do this for us, you know, and they, they want to do it now. I mean, the sooner we can do it, even if it's a month, month and a half down the road, they're gonna do it. Let's take advantage of it.
Corporation Council, I'm not sure if this has happened in other communities, but typically, you know, we have our boilerplate agreements with Eversource for, or interconnects on the solar system.
Right.
Egress access to town property. So I'm sure that's something we could work out. I just haven't, I haven't personally seen one. I didn't know this is a standard that they would.
Okay.
Do. So that's wonderful. I, I know there's been a lot of discussion about it, but want to let that out and bring it forward back to council and make sure that everything's over on the town and to have the trucks on the field and all the insurance and all that.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that one, I would agree with. The other two, and, and I'll tell you why I'm a little bit concerned, and I'm just, I, I want them to look at those other two. And I'm, that funding, I guess those add up to six hundred thousand, even if we delayed that a little bit after Public Building looks at it, because there there's another project we're kind of waiting on. We should have an answer within a week or two. It has to do with the high school, right? We have, we have some issues at the high school there and I don't know what that is going to say, the report, but it may be costing us a few shekels to fix that. And I'm just, that, that would be if, if it's, you know, there's a water leak in there. We're trying to figure that out. We, we've been dealing with it for a while. We have a consultant that I think is ready to give us the report and, and ready to give us what the repairs may or may not cost. And that's gonna have to be done immediately, I think. So if we have, you know, rather than spend every last penny out of the two point six million, which as a saver, I don't like doing anyway, but I'm just kidding. So, oh, there we go, there we go. Now I gotta deal with the Godfather now. That's all right. Yeah, right, we did. Never leave the cannolis. We had to learn, learn that from the Godfather. If we learn nothing else. But that's the reason I'd like to just give a little time to, to look at those two and kind of hold back that funding. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to commit that yet because I'm concerned and I may be concerned for no reason. I don't have any reason to know it's, you know, but there is something that will need to be fixed with some of that. So that's why I would take those out and, you know, I mean, the, we'll let the
The lights.
Public Bill, the lights go, they can go through, we can worry, you know, and I'm sure that's probably gonna be less than that figure with, with Eversource, I would think. And then we'll just see what happens with that other. And we should know that, I think, within the month, I think. Someone from Public Building is waiting on the final report. Does that, does that make sense? Okay, is that good? Okay.
Building will maintain repairs through the season as we need to until.
Yeah. Yeah.
We've been critical on the park, the parking lot. I mean, it could happen this summer, just around the.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we, yeah, we, I mean, we could, yeah, we could, we could push them to kind of get that done first, the parking.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Now, are you expanding the parking? Or what, what do you?
Time is to go west a little bit, so.
Yeah. West, you're gonna go west. Go west, young man, yeah. You're gonna go into the brook? You're gonna put a bridge over the brook or what are you gonna do? Just curious. No, okay, okay. So the cars could float away? That way it solves the problem right there.
We think with the aisles right now are thirty foot wide.
Okay.
And it's a one-way.
Yeah.
So you've been on the lower parking lot.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning for two ways is twenty-four foot. So by squeezing it, not squeezing it, by making it actually zoning compliant, we're saving space and by going another twenty feet down, we get another eighteen spaces. The lower lot is consistently overloaded. I know, because I was going to the Willard H V A C meetings.
Yeah.
And you'd have to always park on the grass online, especially on, the kids are getting picked up. So we think we can get another eighteen to twenty spaces just by going down a little bit.
A little bit, towards the, towards the.
Wetlands as well.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, there's gotta be wetlands there, right?
That's a flood plain.
It's a flood plain, yeah, okay.
Way or flood plain, so.
Okay.
And it floods now anyway, so.
Yes. So we want to flood the new pavement too?
We're gonna have some measures.
Got you, got, gotcha.
But when it's flooded, it's flooded. I don't care what you put in there, you know, the pump system.
All right, is that the best place to put parking then? Do we want to have flooded?
But it's very convenient and we're gonna be repaving that lower lot, so we can go down. We can look at other spots in that, that maybe the upper area can be more efficiently arranged, but we didn't look at that.
Yeah, what?
The lower parking lot is shot.
Yeah, no, I see. I, I was looking at it today, actually. I see the, the plows.
Asphalt off of the asphalt.
Yes, I see that. Yeah, no, it's, it's a mess. No doubt, we need to do it, but I just.
And I think it could be passed, as, as
Yeah.
Doug pointed out, we can just keep putting a smear coat on there and, you know, nurse it through, but that parking lot really needs to be done.
What if you, I guess you couldn't get the playground there, but what, what if you went like, I guess that would be south, right? Instead of towards the brook, is it still a flood? It's all flood plain probably there, because that, that all does flood. That all does flood.
You have the playground.
Yeah.
And you have the stairs and there's a great change up toward the upper parking lot, so.
Yeah.
And then the roads, so you're kind of boxed in there.
And there's no room on the other side, because you got the playground there, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I just, it just doesn't make sense to me to put parking in where it floods, because what, what good is it gonna be when it floods, but I know there's no other place.
Just don't park there.
So why build it then?
Well, it's already floods.
No, I know.
Regular lot anyways.
I got you, I know.
Floods the whole road.
Yeah. Yes, huh? Good for the trying days, that's it. Okay, all right.
Just ask them.
Yes, yes.
Kevin, if they reduce this by seven hundred thousand and then something comes up at the school or whatever, we would still have to go back for our town meeting, right? Because we have to still appropriate whatever it would need for the school.
Right, if, if it's not appropriated, it will, it will sit there. This is, the money was deposited into a non-lapsing account, so it will remain there until you decide to appropriate the money for something. But you would have to do a, a town meeting and then a council and Board of Finance vote to appropriate it.
So you know the timing of it, just in case.
We have other funds we could use for the, and reimburse with this, of course, I'm sure, right? Right? We have to?
We expect that there will be year-end funds. Mayor, may, may I make a comment about one of the things or, or just make everybody aware of one of the things you had mentioned a moment ago? The, the the moisture issue at the high school was discussed with the Board of Finance as they were debating what to do with the money.
Yeah.
And the board felt that they would deal with the matter, the financials of the matter, if and when it arises and based on the amount. So when they made this recommendation, they did it with the understanding that there may be potentially and, and the numbers that we put out in the meeting to make sure they understood sort of the magnitude were half million to a million dollars. Now, I'm not saying it's going to be that number. I, to your point earlier, I, I don't have any information, but
I don't know yet.
We, we didn't want to leave them with the feeling like it might be fifty thousand dollars or a hundred, that it could potentially be significant. And their feeling was that they still wanted to go forward with this recommendation as is, and then deal with that matter separately. So just to give everybody perspective of what the Board of Finance discussed during the budget hearing.
But, and I, and I think this new information came to light after their discussion, quite frankly. The higher numbers, but, 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 but we don't know till we get the official report. I think there's just
Absolutely.
binary stuff that's P B C has. And we're hopeful that it's not, you know, that much, but I, I, I don't, I don't think we know yet. So I'm just concerned, you know, to, to move forward and worry about it later. I think later is now for the school. I mean, that moisture has been in the school now. I think we, I looked myself and a member of the Board of Finance and, you know, the superintendent looked at that a year and a half ago. And we're still dealing with it. We still don't have the answers. So I think, but I think it's, the answers are imminent, from what I understand. So I just want to make sure we have funding to move on it quickly, especially if we could get whatever needs to be done as the school year, you know, ends or getting close to the end, we could get stuff done quickly. So, but I understood. I still would stand with what I, you know, but, but it's all going into the fun and we don't spend it on that. It's there, right? I mean, that's the bottom line, Kevin, right?
Absolutely. It was specifically put in a non-lapsing funds. It would remain until both the council and Board of Finance elected to use it for whatever purpose.
Gotcha, okay. So it serves the same purpose. Uh, okay, what do we, what do we, what's our, what are we doing with the motion here now?
The amount to the two million.
I think we're just taking the six hundred grand out, right? Six hundred grand, the four and the two?
Thirty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Right?
Yes.
It's gonna be two million.
Thirty-eight thousand, seven thirty-two. We're taking the six hundred out. I mean, it's, it'll, it'll be there. And I'm not saying those projects aren't gonna get done, because they're gonna get done too, one way or the other, but just like some money to use quickly if need be. And it's for the school. It's for the school. That's, there's that too. Uh, anyway. So we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to call a town meeting at six forty-five P M. On April eighth, twenty twenty-five, for the purpose of approving a fiscal year twenty twenty-five non-budgeted appropriation from the Berlin High School Construction Fund to the Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund in the amount of two million, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars to fund the capital items listed in this agenda item.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Yeah.
As a, this amended agenda item.
Second.
Second, thank you. Uh, any other comments or questions?
Yes, Mayor, didn't you say that we were going to, within this, is that approving the lights also?
Yeah, the lights are in there. We left.
The lights are in there?
We left that in, yeah, and we'll do, we could adjust that amount as we figure it all out, right, with Doug and Ryan and P B C. Yeah, yeah. All, yeah, and I mean, I mean, we didn't look at all the other stuff here. I, I think, you know, right, we all looked at this whole list and to, to, I know the, you know, our staff is there and.
I'll just say, I, I believe every item that's on here was presented to you.
Yes, it was, right.
You have seen these items.
Oh, yeah, we've seen them all and, you know, from what I see, other than the last little bit of discussion, yeah, all, it's great that we are able to fund all of this and it's wonderful that, you know, finally the state gave us back our money and, and our, our refund and we're able to use that this year and get a lot of, you know, uh, capital items and projects done like this. So that's all, it's all good. For change, it's all good. Everybody kind of happy now? You guys happy? Everybody's happy? No, there we go. Look at people are actually happy. I, I can't, I can't, I can't think of a budget hearing. People have been happy. It's not really a budget hearing, but we're talking about.
Take a picture.
Yeah, we, we need a picture. You look at they're smiling, they're, they're kind of happy. Something's, so, there you go. Something's wrong. We just messed that whole thing up, right? Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're good. Now we're happy. It's official. Okay. Yeah, it's all good.
Should you also take a motion to move those other two items to P B C?
Yes, we can do that. No, do we need to? Yes.
Add it to the agenda.
Add it to the agenda. Okay, we'll go ahead and, a motion to.
Make a motion to move the. Make a motion to move the two items that were amended from the previous motion to the PBC.
All right. The Willard parking lot. Is that what you want?
Berlin building.
And the Timberland building, yes.
Yeah, this should be specified.
The Timberland Maintenance Building, you also talked about
Willard parking lot.
Willard parking lot.
And the lights, the lights are going. Yes, the lights are actually going too, they're in their own little category, but they're, they're going too, so we'll yeah, we'll, to going to PBC, yes, yes, yes. We funded, we funded the other, the other, the lights are funded and hopefully to save a few bucks on that with ever source. So that, so that's
The item would be to add a, a motion to send to Public Building Commission, the Willer School Lot, the roof windows replacement, Timberland Maintenance Building, and the Sage Park lighting upgrades. You can just say, so moved.
So moved.
Second, all right.
You're gonna vote on the actual motion as presented.
As amended.
As amended.
As presented.
Yeah, all right, so all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved, so moved. Yeah, whatever Kate says, we, we do, okay? Whatever you tell us, Kate, we do.
Yeah, what she said.
I think Ryan's learned that too, whatever Kate would do with, yeah, yeah, on the first day, well, whatever Kate says, do it, yes, okay, we're good.
I'm just kidding, I knew that from before.
Yeah, well, weren't you the, uh,
Yeah, yeah, no, Kate and I go way back.
Yeah, so, you know.
I know.
Anyway, okay, thank you, everybody, thank you. Yes, where are we at? Five?
Number five.
Lucky number five. All right, so this is, uh, something that I believe we touched on in the past, this is the, uh, we need a contract amendment with Lorero, who has been doing the environmental work regards to fifty-five Steel Boulevard, and, and I know Jim Mahoney's here, I believe, uh, we have, uh, Emily with Lorero Engineering as well. On here, Jim, do you want to touch base first, or do you?
Sure, so, you know, we, we had referenced this, um, that we were gonna be coming to the council at the recent briefing that we gave, and also, uh, we kind of reorganized the, um, purchase orders with
Hey, guys.
Grow last summer, Emily at that time, you know, became our project manager, and working with Kevin, we, you know, reorganized the, the purchase orders in a more flexible way, that's, um, easier to deal with the state on also. And we anticipated last August that we would come back, at that time, we reduced the, um, reduced the purchase order by twenty-nine thousand, and now we're coming back for twenty-five thousand, we're, as you know, from the last briefing, we're still at a critical point with the project where we've got to complete the, um, you know, dealing with the soils that are on the site, and also, um, uh, attaching, uh, or installing the geo-membrane, which was gonna be overseen by Lorero. And so, um, we wanted to get there, get authorization for additional funding, uh, uh, recently, we've kind of had, as you know, we had to spend additional money on, on, um, on soil, on material testing to look at landfill sites, if we have to go with disposal with some of that material, so that sucked up some money more quickly than we hoped, but at any rate, we did anticipate this, and we're coming back with, uh, you know, request for authorization, kind of tapped out on the existing funds, and, and as I said, at a critical point in the project. But I also say that, you know, basically, that Lorero bills us on, uh, based on their DAS rates, the state DAS, also for the laboratory rates. So, um, that's how, how the contract is organized. And, um, be happy to answer any questions, or, you know, if you have any questions of Emily, she'll, I'm sure, be able to address those.
Okay, questions, folks, on this? Dealing, dealing with this for quite a while. Yeah. Someday, maybe it'll be finished in our lifetime. Um, but we are getting there, we are getting there, so it's good. Any other, any questions? Hearing none, let's go and take a motion then.
Moved away the bidding process and authorized the town manager winter in a contract amendment with Lorero Engineering of twenty-five thousand dollars for continuing environmental consulting services for the fifty-five Steel Boulevard remediation project with the cost charged to the Farmington Avenue Development Non-Grant Account, and this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Emily, for attending as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right, so we'll move on then to agenda item number six, and this should be another familiar item to you all, it's, it's in regards to the twenty twenty-five connectivity grant.
Yes.
County Berlin has had great success with connectivity grants in the past, it's one, in my opinion, it's a great grant from the state because there's no match.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, yeah, that's just great.
It's up to eight hundred thousand dollars.
Nice.
And so I know, uh, Jim Mahoney and Micah Hearn have been working, and, and there, there's a few different proposals. The problem is, I think we have three different areas, but only two we can fund to get to the eight hundred thousand or closest to that, so I, I invite, Mike, do you want to come up to speak on that, or is that Jim?
Okay.
Jim's right here, you, you sign the, get the
Four sto, nice. Oh, well, he did what Kate said, see, he knows too, yeah, that's, I, I get it, I get it.
Hi, Jim, how you doing?
Good, good. So, um, we had come to the council anticipating, you know, last spring, that we were gonna do this design in preparation for the twenty twenty-five grant round for the connectivity program. And we discussed, um, you know, first, we were discussing two sidewalk segments on, one on Kensington Road between Carriage Drive and Norton Road, and, uh, the other was in East Berlin, where we were also trying to do sidewalks near schools. And, um, and we decided, and at that time, you know, so we were decided to design that one, which is on Main Street, kind of connects from Berlin Street, gets people to Hubbard School. And then the council asked us to also design a section that's near, um, Griswold School, which would be taking the sidewalks from their current terminus around Sterling Drive on Ailing Street, bringing them up to Heather Lane, and then constructing sidewalks on the portion of Heather Lane that doesn't have sidewalks. There was those three segments. And as Ryan said, um, you know, we can't do them all. The, um, the combination that comes closest to the eight hundred thousand dollar budget, which is in at about eight hundred and ten thousand, based on our estimates, would be to fund the, uh, Ailing Street and Heather Lane sidewalks and the Main Street East Berlin sidewalks. Uh, so, uh, this is a discussion item tonight, and, you know, we do have, you know, if we go, for example, Kensington Road and Main Street East Berlin, that it would be more like nine hundred thousand, and then if we go with Kensington Road and Ailing, uh, Kensington Road and Ailing Street, that would be more like a million fifty thousand. So, those are the three numbers we're looking at, and wanted to get some feedback, and then next, the council meeting, we'll bring back an, an authorization to apply for the connectivity grant.
Thanks, thanks, Jim, yeah, I think we, we figured the two that were kind of closest to the schools, with, that added up to the eight hundred grand, which was the Hubbard one and the Griswold one, would, would, and, you know, would be, obviously, safety-wise, we're looking at the sidewalks for, for that reason, and certainly unfamiliar, the Heather Lane one was weird, they put in a piece of sidewalk years ago, and then right, they need to be done, and the Hubbard one too, obviously, you know, the safer, we can make it closer to the schools where, you know, children are actually, students are actually walking is Yeah, there you go, yeah, yeah, they're gonna get, that's right, they're gonna get their parking lot, so see, everybody's, everybody's somewhat happy, yeah. There we go, so, uh, are we, we good with those two?
Yep.
That added up to just about what the grant?
Yeah, yeah.
The, yeah, the, the, yep, so it's Ailing, Heather Lane, and then the Hubbard, so Griswold School and Hubbard, the ones near them. Is that good? You guys all good with that? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, Donna, you good?
I'm good.
All right, thank you, thanks, Donna. Go back to the legislature, come on, yeah. Aren't they still there? They should still be there.
Oh, today was a light day.
A light day, great.
No such thing.
No such thing, okay, so we have
Twelve hours yesterday.
Oh, no, oh my goodness. Punishment, um. No action, right? We're coming back?
Right.
So I think we have our consensus, Jim, so.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Welcome.
Appreciate it, all right.
All right, uh, agenda items number seven and eight for your consideration this evening are in regards to uh, potential tax abatements that have been recommended from the Economic Development Commission, and our director, Chris Edge, is here to discuss those, so we'll start with agenda item number seven, which is Demming Road Business Park LLC.
Yes, uh, one eighty zero Demming Park, uh, Demming, uh, Road was, uh, building two built in the, what is gonna be a four-building complex. First building, uh, was actually purchased by the, uh, Golf Training School, uh, building two is still owned by the developer, uh, which is, uh, Demming Business Park LLC. Basically looking for a three-year tax abatement on that building itself, uh, they're hopefully soon gonna be putting up buildings three and four. Fits within our, uh, abatement policy, and Economic Development had approved it for a three-year tax abatement.
Okay. Appreciate that, Chris, that, that was my question, you answered it, that it fits within our policy, right?
Yes.
Nothing, nothing different on this?
No, it's actually kind of nice, um, we've got like three or four small businesses in there, like eleven hundred to twelve hundred square foot spots for industrial, which are actually been a nice addition, um, in that part of town, and hopefully a couple more buildings will give us a couple more smaller companies. It's kind of a launch, it's a good launch-from-home location, uh, for different tenants of industrial types.
Great, any other questions, folks? We good?
Good.
Pretty good, okay, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve a tax abatement for Demming Road Business Park LLC for the construction of a six thousand eight hundred square foot building at one eighty Demming Road, fifty percent in year one, forty percent in year two, thirty percent in year three, for the town's tax abatement policy.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Uh, any, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved. Chris, you want to jump in? The next one is
Absolutely, uh, the next one is, uh, three-three-seven, uh, Berlin LLC, um, this is the building formerly known as Industrial Surplus, um, this is actually a separate property from the McDonald's, which had come to you a couple months ago. Uh, they're gonna be taking a portion of the building off, uh, so that McDonald's has enough room, they're gonna be refacing the entire building, um, and leasing it out to a couple different retailers. So they're looking at probably approximately three to four million dollars, because what they're really doing is stripping it down to essentially its four walls. It is a definitely challenging building for retail, but they've talked, just speaking to a couple different tenants. Um, the yellow building, the industrial one in back, as of the moment, they're gonna keep it. Uh, but they're looking to do a large renovation on it, and I believe part of that was, one, McDonald's, and two, they want to make it a nice quality building. Um, so we're, uh, we're hopeful this will happen, um, again, looking at three to four million dollars, which gives him the ability to get the seven-year tax abatement. Um, and again, if the work is done, he gets abatement, if that isn't done, then he doesn't get the tax abatement, and again, that's such a visible corner, we're hoping that they'll see some viability there, the good news is, is about four to five acres in the rear of the property, we're not sure what's gonna happen yet, but for future development, so I think as things get moving, um, I believe, and not that it's related to this, but I believe McDonald's put out the bid for construction and getting bids in, so that may happen soon as well.
Nice, great, huh? Yeah, that sounds good. Any questions? We all good?
Yep.
Good, right, motion, take a motion.
Move to approve a tax abatement for three-three-seven Berlin LLC for the renovation of renovation and refacing of three-three-seven Berlin Turnpike, of fifty percent in year one, fifty percent in year two, forty percent in year three, forty percent in year four, thirty percent in year five, and twenty percent in year six, and ten percent in year seven. Yes, per the tax abatement policy.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you all, have a great night.
All right, thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Number nine, lucky number nine.
Number nine.
Number nine.
Turn it over to our town clerk in just a second, this is
It's her baby, yeah.
This is I, you said it, Mayor, not
Yeah, I know, I know. I knew she would appreciate that.
Uh, America two fifty, so Kate, take it away.
Take it.
Take it away.
It's really and truly just to remind you that we need people on the committee, so, or, um, and that whole bit, I know that, um, Andy has reached out to me that maybe she might have, um, some connections with, uh, Lions Club, and also, um, I talked to, Chris Edge had given me a lead on somebody from Comcast. Um, he was very much on the fence because even though Comcast has their headquarters here in Berlin, they are along the whole northeast. And that, uh, he felt too, is that they may be more involved with Boston. So that's where we're kind of going into a, you know, a little bit of an issue. He was very, uh, Brad was very willing to help out with different things if he could. And I can propose, maybe if we want to do those, um, story shares or things like that, he said he might be able to get somebody in who could do video.
Oh.
You know, something, so there may be other ways that we can get somebody to do something. Um, but we really do need the, it, this has to be a community. So it can't be town, and it can't be, um, you know, our boards and commissions totally, it really has to be people who are from the community, who will, um, go to their different meetings and things like that, and talk about it. I don't know, um, Elaine, but she's with the Rotary Club, so that would be great.
Yeah, she's very good.
You know, so
She's great.
Hear good things about.
Yeah, she's excellent.
And she immediately stepped right up, so that was wonderful.
That's good.
But we do need, if you know anyone in business, you know, somebody from Berlin Steel, you know, any you know, one that would be willing to serve on this committee to promote it within their facilities, within their, you know, that whole bit, but we need, this is too big for me to take on. You know, I can facilitate it and encourage it, and we can always do something, but we really do need a lot of, um, support from the community. And I guess it's just starting that, um, in fact, it was one of my staff members who said that they saw this actually from a friend of theirs who's involved in another town, but it's finally getting out there that, you know, we're gonna be celebrating America two fifty. I really haven't seen a lot out, you know, there have been news articles or anything like that, that's why I'm probably gonna be here every council meeting, maybe at the other, just reminding you guys, uh, get it out there to talk about it, to see what we can do. Um, and of course, I'll work with the library and with the Historic Society, because they're like no brainers, they bring in. We have a great amount of history here in this town, and I'm just gonna say, I'm sick and tired of people coming into my office and telling me that they have nothing in Berlin.
Oh, my God.
I can sit there and tell them exactly what they have in Berlin, and
Tell them.
Or also tell them where they can go if they don't like Berlin.
Even better, even better, yes.
Want to name a town so you can go to? I don't want to
Derby.
But
No, no, no.
So much here.
Did I see, um, someone suggested that we approach the school for a senior next year? Someone who, that was yours, Sandy.
Yeah.
Oh.
You have somebody from each school, from every elementary school, and the E and B H R.
That's better.
Yeah, that's better.
I have reached out to the superintendent, um, twice, I haven't heard back from him, but I also understand that in the middle budget, it may be a little bit, you know, overwhelmed. And, and then we're gonna get into the end of school year, so I'm trying to give him a break too, but I would love to see it, I, I can't imagine it's not gonna be discussed you know, within history classes and all that, I don't know if they do civics anymore, but I would love to see, um, we had talked about at least Carrie and I, and, um, uh, Lorraine Stubb had mentioned that I'm a member of the Elks in Wallingford, I know Mark is in, um, New Britain, but they do a essay contest for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and it's a great, um, on that committee, it's a great little thing, we can do that here in town. Um, have an essay for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, who, and then they promote that, and have whoever wins, like, maybe gift cards. And then I thought maybe for like the third, fourth, and fifth graders, art projects, you know, something along those lines, so that we get all that, yeah, because you get that involvement, and, you know, kids are very creative.
Hey, it's actually fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth for the Americanism through the Elks now. They expanded it. As I chaired that for the Elks for a number of years.
Didn't do fifth graders. We did sixth, seventh, and eighth. You know, so, I mean, I don't know. It doesn't matter. It probably depends upon the Elks lodge, but we only.
No, that's, that's national.
Yeah, I know it is.
How big do you want the commission to be?
We were talking about thirteen members for thirteen colonies.
Okay.
So, you know, I mean.
Makes sense, thirteen.
They're always good for throwing in a volunteer, Berlin Little League.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Berlin Bears.
Sure.
Or even a Scouts.
You know.
Scouts.
I mean, any of, whoever you guys know, you're the ones that live here. You're the ones that have the.
Trying to find some people.
You know, the.
Because now I'm even thinking like maybe someone from upbeat.
Oh, yeah, upbeat too.
Might be good. And I'm even thinking someone from the Republican Town Committee, someone from the Democrat Town Committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Donna has her hand raised?
I, I do, I do. Um, I just received, um, quite a few documents regarding this America two fifty, uh, through the Connecticut Humanities, um, came to my office. So Kate, what I could do is, um, make a copy and, and, and maybe get this down to you tomorrow. I think they're even doing some sort of a, event, uh, on Friday of this week up at Yukon. They dropped off my mail because I haven't been to my office, but, uh, so I apologize, um, not getting this to you sooner. Uh, but there's a lot of information here that I think you'd be able to use, um, you know, regarding pulling this together and doing a nice job with it, so.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I'll, um, I'll be sure to get it to you in the next day or so. Hook or crook. Okay?
We were told, I was told about the, um, event at Yukon. I can't make it on Friday. Uh, um, and then I'm going to attend a conference in New Hampshire on Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, but Tuesday at noon, we do have our first meeting with America two fifty. So I'm going to zoom on that. So don't go crazy with getting it to me because it may be the same information.
Yeah, there's, it may even, you know, there's a lot of literature here, so I, and it might be the same thing that you're going to get, but I, I'll try to get this over to you. And you can take a look at it. Okay?
Right, I appreciate that, yep.
Oh, no, no problem.
Stuff on the website.
Too bad.
Right, right. And it, they have a logo they've produced. There's a little button thing here. There's some sticker things. So I think that maybe that can help you with, uh, putting it on the website. Okay?
Alright, thank you. I appreciate.
You're welcome. No problem.
Okay, so where, so where are we at?
Jesse, can, do you want to wait to make appointments or do you want to add the two members I have so far?
Uh, I, I, I think, I think, I think Elaine's good. I don't know the other guy, Peter. I don't know that guy, but I, I guess we could put him up. Yeah, yeah, no, I'd say Adam. Let's add him. Let's do it, right?
Absolutely.
Yes. So let's make a couple of appointments. We, uh, motion to, uh, well nomination for the, um, America two fifty commission, Elaine, uh, Willie Killer name, P- Pavaris, uh.
Paradise.
Paradise, okay.
Papa Sarah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's alright, Donna. That's her. Close enough. She, she knows who she is, no.
There's a V in there. There's a V in there.
That's a V, that's right, that's right. So nomination. And Peter Russo, yes. So, uh, all is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Closed? Alright, so moved. Welcome to the commission.
Thank you. Thank you. I think.
Yeah, really? You got what you wished for, Peter. I don't know. Alright, no, it'll be, it'll be fun. It'll be, it'll be fun.
Yep.
Okay, where are we at here? Number ten.
Number ten. This is, this is the town manager. So this is me. This is, this is an annual. This should look familiar.
Oh, yeah.
Every year, this is re-adopting our fair housing policy.
Yeah.
Fair housing policy statement, affirmative action policy statement.
Are familiar with it.
Title six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four.
It's all good stuff, yeah. Yep. We are, we are good, so we will go ahead and take a motion on this.
Move to re-adopt the fair housing resolution and fair housing policy statement, affirmative action policy statement, and the compliance with title six of Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four statement.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Alright, so moved. And town managers report.
Right, so you guys have gotten off easy so far and.
Oh.
It's all gonna end.
Oh, it's all ending now. We get it.
I have a few, a few, I just want to go over some updates this evening. So one, I, I want to let you all know, you may have seen a post about it. We hadn't, uh, we celebrated Employee Appreciation Day, uh, on March seventh. We had ice cream emergency here at town hall. And then also went to the garage on, on Front Lane Road. And, uh, it was really great. So I just want to thank our HR Director, Paul LaCarabetta, and the Employee Recognition Committee for working to do that. I thought it went really well, so I want to, you know, let you guys know, I think it was pretty nice. Um, I just, uh, oh, some other good news is I was informed by our, um, Timberland Director today that, uh, the golf course will be opening on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth. And so there'll be an event and opening at ten AM. So, uh, I think invitations will be going out tomorrow, so for that in your inboxes. Uh, I also heard from, uh, our Director of Facilities that the generator at the Senior Center is finally up and running.
Hallelujah.
Already?
I lived to see that one.
Generator. Mine too, right?
The generator. It's actually there. Is it really there? Should we go by and make sure it's there?
Really, really there. Now, I, uh, the, the block heater was delayed and then they had a blown fuse. Because I, uh, know all the, it was, it was, you know, a lot of different things, shipping delays.
Yeah, we will never have a power failure for sure.
It's going to be.
We've ensured no power failures at the Senior Center.
It's a nice segue into my next topic, which ever source has informed us.
Oh, what other?
An upcoming project. So I'm going to pass out, they shared these slides with us. So, and I can, I can, uh, share it with Councilwoman Beach as, as, as well. Um, but, uh, here, if you guys just want to pass this down, uh, share that. So, so this was just shared with us. This is a, uh, transmission tower replacement project that's coming up. And the project was actually, uh, pushed up. Just i- if you look on the timeline on this, it'll say construction in, over the, I think it was August. We had plenty of time, so I wasn't going to mention it yet, but now they bumped it up to June.
Okay.
And I asked specifically if there will be power, uh, potential power disruption during this construction, and the answer was yes. So.
Oh, lovely.
I wanted to pass this out and make you all aware of it, and we'll have to get information out to, to our residents. Uh, but just, just so you know, th- this is, uh, this is construction that's coming. And I, I wanted, just in case, uh, the public has any questions as well.
Hmm.
So we may need that generator, so.
Great. Well, I'm glad it's there.
Really? Let's see. Also, uh, I shared with you all, I know, uh, on the, uh, Britain Stadium, New Britain requested an extension of the current agreement that we have, that pilot payment. Uh, and so that'll be something that, uh, will likely be coming for you at some point. And I know, uh, the former, Arrocha, or former town manager had previously provided, uh, quarterly reports to you all as, as status updates. I have a, a copy of one of, of one of the reports that, uh, was submitted in the past. And so, uh, I just want, you know, is, does that work for you if I provide quarterly updates on all the departments and, and the goings on of town hall? And, and kind of continue that. I, I talked to the mayor about it.
I think it's, I think it's great, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so look for that.
It's useful.
I'll, uh, we have a, we have a department head meeting tomorrow, so I'm going to talk with the department heads about continuing that, but I just wanted to, to let you know that we'll, we'll continue that because I think it's good for you to see all the good work that our town employees are, are doing. They really do a lot here.
Lot of good stuff going on, so hard to keep track of it. Nice to see a quarterly.
Um, yeah, I do want to touch briefly on, on the budget and let me just say, so like I said before, you know, the, uh, the Board of Finance, I think, did a really great job. And, and my hats off to you all for, um, funding so much capital this year. I don't know if, if we've ever funded that much capital through, uh, maybe not the budget process, but, uh, you know, a non-budget appropriation to kind of coincide. So, uh, overall, right now, there's a four percent increase in expenditures on the general government side and a four percent increase on the Board of Education side. I believe it's the most on the Board of Education side in.
Maybe, ma- maybe ever.
Maybe, maybe ever, so. And, and so I, I just want to, as I said earlier, you know, with your action tonight on the depreciation schedule, that brings us to a point five eight mil rate increase currently, which, uh, is a one point nine two percent increase to the mill rate. So it's, you, we're under two percent right now, and you guys haven't even taken a crack at it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, I.
Oh, we could do better.
I, I, I'm not saying, you know, I, but I do want to say that the budget as is, it's a lot done for the town. And it, it really does, uh, and we can do a lot with it. And so, uh, so I know, you know, you guys can, you know, move on from there, but, uh, but I just want to say it was, this was my first time working with the Board of Finance on the budget process, and I thought they did a, a very good job. And I also want to thank our finance director as well, um, you know, going through that process. So I look forward to having conversations with you all, uh, as we continue that process. And as I mentioned before, we have that annual budget meeting next Tuesday. And so we'll be presenting the budget as is, and then the Board of Finance will be taking action, and then it'll come to, to you guys on the first.
What is that? Is it six o'clock you said at the high school? Six?
Six o'clock.
Six, six, yeah.
Uh, does anyone have any questions on the budget now?
Uh, we'll see it soon enough.
Yeah, I figured. Alright.
Red their binder.
Of course. Oh, my God, every night before I go to sleep. Yes, every night before I go to sleep. Couple pages, out like a light. All good.
So the next item is some, is some good news for the town and with a caveat, so I want to explain, uh, this.
Uh-oh, that caveat.
And this is in regards to, we received a grant. And so you may recall that we had applied for a grant. It's a Safe Streets to School Grant, and it was through the Transportation Alternatives Program. This is, uh, this was a very good thing. It was estimated that we would do four million dollars worth of sidewalks. Four million dollars with a twenty percent match from the town. So if we were to move forward with that four million dollars, the, the town would have to cover the twenty percent. So we were, uh, we were notified that we weren't, we weren't funded with the Transportation Alternatives Program, but we were instead funded with the Carbon Reduction Program funding. So we still are receiving these funds now. More good news. So DOT now estimates that the cost is, of the project is actually higher than the initial four million dollars. It's projected to be nearly six million dollars. So we're looking at a, um, a match to the town if we were to fund the full project of one point two million dollars, uh, which is, which is very substantial, and, and I understand that. So, uh, Jim Mahoney, myself, we had conversations with, uh, VHB and this, uh, with the state in order to talk about potentially scaling down the project as well as, uh, what our options are initially, because we don't, the project's in pieces. It's, uh, the first step of the project is the design and engineering work. And so we might be able to do the design and engineering work, and then we could pull out if, if we decided that we didn't want to do the whole grant. We could not do it. Um, and so if we were to do the design and engineering for the full project, it would be roughly a hundred seventy thousand dollars to the town. So and the, you know, I know Jim will probably want to chime in, uh, but, you know, with that, uh, design work, we can use that design. If we don't fund it now for later connectivity grant funding, so there is some benefits in doing the design work now. Because having that design would allow us to apply for other grants in the future that maybe don't have a match like that connectivity grant, you know, but that still requires the design. Uh, so the other option is we could scale back the project now, and we could go from a six million dollar grant to the minimum we could do because it's federal funds would likely be two million dollars. So i- if we scaled it back that much, it would be about a, I think, a four hundred thousand dollar match to the town. So these are, this is also, I, I just want to let you know about this now. We'll be coming back with an action item, uh, and present streets. There's a whole, there's the list of, of roads that we had applied for. Uh, we, we did brief the mayor on this and we went through some, some options. I know Jim's been working on some alternatives. I, I guess it's a good problem to have. We have all this grant money. And it's, it's good to be able to leverage our own tax dollars to get as much bang for the dollar for our, our residents as possible. But at the same time, you know, one point two million dollars is a lot for the town. So, um, so just something, some food for thought for now. Jim, did you want to chime in on anything on that?
I think you covered it well for now, and, uh, we'll be back.
Good answer.
So, uh.
As the clock ticks away.
Thank, thank you, Mark. Um, so I just have a quick question. You mentioned a carbon reduction program. Do we have any descriptions as to what that is?
Good question. Jim, do you have, I, I just know that's the program that we were funded through, but I, I do not have that.
Walking instead of getting in your car, I guess? I don't know.
Yeah, we don't, we don't really have a lot of details on that. We didn't apply under that program, so we didn't really analyze the, you know, the program details, but we'll have, we'll have that.
I'm sure.
We have forward for discussion, sure.
Okay, I, that's fine. I, I, I was just curious. Okay, alright.
Everybody gets an electric scooter?
They want us to give up our gas.
I think we're all getting an electric scooter. That's what's going to happen.
And just to say again, as Ryan said, the, the reason that we're funded is, is really the Safe Streets for Schools theme of the grant, and that's, that's really what got us the funding this time.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, great. And I have one last item and, uh, uh, Councilman Nessa talked about it earlier, but the Resilient Piper Brook and Webster Brook, uh, is having, this is the program that we're talking about flood mitigation strategies that impact the town of Berlin. And they have a, a meeting. We just put this on the town's Facebook page and we're promoting it, so I just wanted to inform you all. It's going to be held on April second from five thirty PM to seven PM at Alvarium Beer Company, so.
Oh, a lot of good, a lot of good discussion there.
Oh, yeah.
That's it for my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, special committee reports. I don't, right? I don't think we, uh, have any, uh, right?
Nope.
So on to our counselor communications, folks. What do you all have?
I just want to urge folks to check out this, uh, meeting at the brewery because, as you know, we live in the Great Swamp and, uh, the things that these folks are going to do will affect drainage into our town. Um, and, uh, anybody that lives near one of the brooks in the lower parts of town and so forth should really go and tell their story. As, as I understood, the object of this was to hear from the citizens what areas really needed to be looked at. Because these folks doing a study don't live here. They don't, they don't deal with it day in, day out. They need your input.
You're going to go.
Oh, yeah.
I'll try.
And any citizen that's got a soggy backyard should stop by.
Good. Anyone else? Counselor Communications. What are we?
Good tonight.
What? What? That's a shocker. Um, yeah, remember we have our, um, meeting tomorrow night, uh, with Bright Feeds. Bright Feeds and six o'clock, same place here. Um, I think some great stuff to report. We'll, we'll leave it to, uh, all our reports tomorrow night that we'll be getting, so I think it's, uh, I think it's good. And we, we, um, also, it was going to happen tonight, but it may now be postponed. And the, the police commission or a couple of members, maybe the chair and, uh, a couple of other folks may come to talk to us. They, there's some change perhaps in the chief's contract. They might, they might want to discuss with us. I think they're going to come, uh, maybe in the April meeting, um, to talk about it, just. It's some.
Mayor, the only other thing I would like to say is, not, not necessarily jump on what Charlie said, but to really encourage, um, the citizens of Berlin to come out to the budget presentation on March twenty-fifth. I mean, it's their tax dollars. It's their money out of pocket. They should know where the money's being spent and how it's being spent. And, um, you know, if they have something to say or an opinion, this is their opportunity, so I would highly encourage it.
Uh, yeah, let's hope they, right, they should be there and know where the money is coming from and going to, right?
Yep.
So that's good. Anyone else? Folks, any? Donna, anything?
No, I'm hoping to be there in the flesh next time around. Miss you all.
Excellent, excellent. Excellent, excellent. Get better soon. Okay, so we're done with, we're on to our minutes, uh, approval, motion.
I move, we accept the minutes of the March fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting as presented.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. So moved. And on to our executive session, so we'll go ahead and take a motion.
We go into the executive session. Pending litigation, Connecticut General State Statute Section one dash two hundred six B Strategy and negotiations with respect to pending claims or pending litigation for three fifty-nine four ride road.
Alright, second on that for the motion. Thank you. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fight it in, yes.
So.
Engineer, the town attorney, and the town manager, please.
And me. Is somebody going to call me, or do you, you want me to call?
No, you're out, Donna.
I'm good, I'm good with that.
You're out, you're out, Donna. That's it. Charlie has spoken.
I'm in my recliner. I'm ready, baby.
You're good, you're good. We, we will call you. Give us a minute.
Sounds good, thank you.
Why would you want?
Uh, oh, would she want to call in? You want to?
Well, whatever you want me to do.
We'll call you right, right now after this.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Donna. We'll call you.
So, yeah, I'll put this up so you guys.
Give us a minute, yeah.
Yeah, if you want it.